Respond promptly, I'd appreciate it. Councilmember Oldama, are you present?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark, are you present?
Here.
Councilmember Hugh?
Here.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Vice Mayor?
Present.
And I'm here. All right, very good. Our next two items on our agenda are the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please rise, join with me. I'm sorry, we're going to do the invocation first and then we'll do our pledge.
Our kind Father who art in heaven, as we come before Thee this day, we are grateful for all the blessings that Thou has granted unto us. We're grateful for this great country in which we live in, for the city and the opportunity we have to serve. We pray, Father in heaven, for Thy blessings upon us and upon those who serve. And we pray that Thou would watch over the city and watch over the citizens. As we go through these difficult times of fighting the COVID virus, we pray for Thy guidance and direction. We pray that we'll have wisdom and be able to make decisions that are prudent. We pray for Thy blessings upon this council tonight, that we'll be able to conduct the necessary business of the city. And these things we pray for, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. You can just remain down there. Please join with me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So with that said, could I get a motion to go into executive session, please?
Yes. Don't move, Mayor.
I have a-
Second?
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? In favor, please vote aye. We are going to because we don't want to take the chance of somebody voting nay or in favor of and being misrepresented. I am going to roll call everything tonight. So with that, we will start with Councilmember Oldama. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, that motion does carry.
Mayor, point of order briefly before you recess.
Go ahead.
Just to make clear in the minutes that we are going in under item number 19. So if you do that, Clark, I'd appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Very good. Okay, so if you folks, we'll go back in the room. We'll give you a couple of minutes to call in and we'll conduct our executive session. We're going to recess until then.
Okay, and currently we're waiting for our members that were at home to get back on the line with us. So be patient with this for a minute. We have people online right now?
Mayor?
Okay.
Councilmember Clark.
Okay, Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Tomachov?
Here, I'm here.
Councilmember Aldama?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, okay, we do have everybody present. Okay, so next on the agenda is a consideration of the minutes from the March 24, 2020 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Mayor, point of order, can you hold one moment?
Certainly.
Because can we confirm that Facebook Live is operating? We're dark.
Okay, it is live. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve March 24, 2020 voting meeting?
Mayor? I approve, we, I move we approve the minutes as presented, thank you.
Mr. Turner made the motion second by?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor to approve the minutes, all in favor. Again, roll call, Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye, the motion does carry unanimous. Moving on to boards, commissions. Due to the CDC guidelines, appointees have been notified by our clerk's office that they were appointed or will be appointed, but the ceremonial swearing-in portion is canceled. Upon confirmation, each board and commission member will submit a signed oath of office form and give that to our city clerk as soon as possible. Tonight, we're going to hear the nominations, motion to appoint, and vote for the boards and commission candidates. Councilmember Clark, do you have nominations to offer for boards, commissions, and other bodies?
Yes, Mayor, I do, thank you. I move the recommended appointments to terms on boards and commissions. To the Arts Commission, Chris Kennedy from the Beryl District for a term expiring on To the Library Advisory Board, K.D. Kukowski from the Saworo District for a term expiring on 1/31/2022. To the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Reggie Martinez Jr. from the Beryl District for a term expiring on 1/31/2022. That concludes my recommendations, Mayor.
Thank you, can I have a second, please? I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Hugh, to approve these citizens to boards, commissions, and other bodies, as read by Vice Mayor, no, as read by Councilmember Clark. All in favor, please vote aye. Again, roll call vote, Councilmember Aldama?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor?
Aye.
I vote aye, that motion carries unanimous. We're setting all kinds of new records here tonight, I bet that's never been done in the city of Glendale before. We're going to move on to our consent agenda, items three through seven. Consent agenda are a routine nature, they've been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session, they are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Ms. Bauer, would you please read the consent resolutions, item four through seven?
Item four, resolution number R-20-33, a resolution of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a cooperative fire rate agreement with the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management to provide fire protection to state and federal forests and wildland. Item five, resolution number R-20-34, a resolution of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of amendment two to the intergovernmental agreement for water transportation with the Salt River Valley Water Users Association. Item six, resolution number R-20-35, a resolution of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, IGA 19-0007611-I, for the traffic intersection west of State Road 303, Glendale Industrial Main Project in the city of Glendale. Item seven, resolution number R-20-36, a resolution of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix, FAIN number AZ-2020-008, AZ-2020-009, and AZ-2019-038-00, for acceptance and expenditure of federal transit administration grant funding for transit services. That concludes the consent resolutions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments on any of those items?
No, sir.
Thank you. Comments from the council? Anyone like to hear anything separate? Hearing none? We'll proceed back with, well, we don't have to do that. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda item three and consent resolutions four, five, six, and seven.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Hugh, a second from Councilmember, from the Vice Mayor to recommend action items. Is there any discussion on the motions? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye, Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Okay, public hearing, land development actions. I would remind you folks at home, if you have your phones not muted, please mute them. With public hearing, we have now move on, public hearings on land development actions. Ms. Bauer, could you introduce item number eight, please, ordinance number 020-25?
Ordinance number O-20-25, an ordinance of the council, the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning property located at the northeast corner of North Cervell Avenue and West Claremont Street from A1 agricultural to PAD, Planned Area Development, for a development plan entitled Bethany 303, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report is our interim development services director, Lisa Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. So the item before you this evening is?
Put the mic right in front of you, so they can hear you at home.
I apologize, thank you, thanks. The item before you this evening is ZON-20-02, Bethany 303 PAD. So the Bethany 303 is a 76-acre site located half a mile east of the Loop 303 between Cervell and Alsup avenues. It is south of Maryland alignment and near the Luke Air Force Base. This annexation, as you'll recall, was adopted in March, on March 24, 2020, and so this is the PAD, the zoning portion of that, to put the development in place so that they can begin development of the site. Again, this request would rezone to PAD, it's currently RR43, it came into the city with that zoning, that was the like zoning from the county. The PAD will enable them to develop the 1.2 million square feet of industrial complex. This is the location on the far west side of the city, immediately adjacent to Luke Air Force Base with the little yellow star. Again, in red, you see Bethany 303, it's just south of the West 303 Crossing that was recently annexed into the city. The general plan does designate this area as Luke compatible land uses, so the industrial land uses that are being proposed are consistent with those requirements. Again, the zoning map does show that it is rezoning from RU43 to PAD in the yellow portion. The aerial view, again, it shows Luke Air Force Base just to the east of this, it's actually touching Luke Air Force Base. So again, the property to the north is the West 303 Crossing that was recently annexed, to the south is Maricopa County, to the east is Luke Air Force Base, and again, to the west is currently Maricopa County. The land surrounding is primarily agricultural, there are a few residences, again, Luke Air Force Base and the recently annexed land to the north. Once again, the site is adjacent to and shares a boundary with Luke Air Force Base, and that 75 to 80 does denote the noise contours, which is why residential is not appropriate for this area. So the future industrial and business complex would be compatible. Project details, it's industrial manufacturing and distribution, this site would have access from Cervell and Alsup roads, private easements are on the north and the south of the site, and it will be shared really with other industrial developments in the area. So the PAD development is requesting some modifications to the height, 85 feet, the maximum FAR, the floor area ratio, would be a .5 FAR, and that is the floor areas multiplied by the net lot area, that's how you get that figure. And then the parking is reduced because we found that there's just not a lot of parking needed for those types of developments, and we don't ever really want to overpark a site. Some of the site plan options, this shows the possibility of having two buildings, there are options that have one, two, and four buildings depending upon the tenants that are brought onto the property. So that one showed two, this one shows four. Here's an elevation that is typical of what this project will look like. This will be required to go through design review, so there will be a specific review of the site plan and elevations and all the materials used on the site. So the land use assumptions again are 1.25 million square feet of building space, the building would be industrial, could be constructed as one, two, or four buildings. There was public notification, the traditional 300-foot notice letter was sent out on January 24th, the site was posted February 19th, the hearing was advertised February 27th, and hearing cards were sent on the 28th, and we've received no comments. The proposed land use is consistent with the general plan, and this, all the city departments have reviewed the proposal, and it is consistent with the PADs and other developments that have occurred along the Loop 303. The staff recommends approval, the planning commission also recommended approval of this request at their April 2 hearing, April 2, 2020, subject to the following stipulations, I won't go through them specifically, but there will be land dedicated along Cervell Avenue for a half-street so that the full street will be developed. The requirements meet Maricopa County and the city of Glendale, the right-of-way requirements are identical. There will also be half-street improvements adjacent to the site, those are going to have to be completed prior to the buildings occupied. And Maryland, as I said, Maryland will be providing the shared access to the north, and Claremont also will be providing access. And I apologize, both Maryland West and Claremont avenues will be dedicated before the building permits are issued. All the development will be in conformance with the PAD, that is in your packet and dated January 9, 2020, and the design review approval will be required for all development on the site. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item number eight, ordinance number 020-25. Ms. Bauer, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, no comments. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on ordinance 020-25?
Yes, Mayor. I move that we pass and adopt ordinance number 020-25.
Second?
I have a motion, Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Tomachov to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item number nine, please?
Church of Christ Valley Congregation Annexation Application, AN-204, public hearing.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report again is Lisa Collins, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the Church of Christ Annexation, AN-204, this is a hearing on the blank petition. And a public hearing is required on this, it is 2.28 acres, it's located at the northwest corner of Northern Avenue and 83rd Avenue. This was heard quite some time ago by the city council at a workshop on January 29, 2019, where we did receive direction to move forward with the annexation process. Here's a vicinity map showing the location of City Hall and then the location of the Church of Christ church to the west. This church is actually already constructed, and I'll get into that. This is the map showing parcels that are currently in the county, and then those that are are in the city of Glendale. So the total site acreage is three acres. One acre of the property was previously annexed into the city. It was before the church was actually developing, and it was combined with another annexation process. The remaining 2.8, 2.28 acres, I'm sorry, are proceeding through the annexation process now and again. This is a public hearing on the blank petition. The current Maricopa County zoning for this is RU43, single-family residential. So the Glendale-like zoning would be RR45. The general plan does show this as low-density residential, 2.5 dwelling units to the acre. So as required by this state statute, we have a blank petition here before you today. And you must hold a public hearing on it. The blank petition was filed with the county recorder. After that point, the city council will hold a public hearing to adopt this. This one is a little bit unique in that there will be no zoning action to go along with it because the church is allowed in that residential zoning district. Again, if this annexation were approved, then it would be added to Glendale's city limits 30 days later after the annexation. Again, there's no motion tonight. This is just a public hearing for notice to the public. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item number nine. Ms. Bauer, do you have any public comments for this?
No, sir.
Very good. Public hearing is now closed and no action is required. So Ms. Bauer, if you can introduce item number 10, please.
107th Avenue and Northern Avenue Annexation AN-206, public hearing.
Mayor, members of the council. Again, here to provide staff report is interim Director of Development Services Director, Lisa Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Northern 107 Annexation AN-206, again, is a hearing on the blank petition. So this is a 10-acre parcel located at the southwest corner of 107th and Northern Avenues. And as required by state statutes, this is a step in the process. The city council did hold a workshop on February 25th, 2020, giving the staff direction to proceed with the annexation process. Again, here's the location, west of City Hall with the blue star, and Northern 107 is indicated. This is the area map. The small corner is what is, the blank petition is being filed for. The rest of the property surrounding that, to the west and the south, is county land that's developed. And here's the site close up. So north of this site is the city of Peoria, west and south is Maricopa County, and east is the city of Glendale. The land use assumptions for the Northern 107 Annexation area are convenience store, fast food, and multifamily. This is a conceptual site plan. There's the planned area development is working its way through the process as well. But this is the conceptual site plan that we have at this point, a conceptual landscape plan to go along with that. Our general plan does indicate this land for medium-density residential, which is 3.5 to 5 dwelling units to the acre. The Maricopa County zoning for this property is currently planned shopping center. So when this is brought into the city, when it's annexed, it will be the like zoning. So this would come in as C2 general commercial. Again, because the development proposal is for general commercial and high-density residential, a rezoning would be required for this parcel. Again, as required by state statute, the blank petition was filed with the county recorder, and the council is required to hold a public hearing on that, which is being done this evening. Once the owner's signatures are obtained, they'll be able to proceed on with the annexation process. We'll schedule a hearing for that. And then 30 days later, they would be added into the city of Glendale's city limits. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from our council?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I'm getting some backfeed. Has everybody got their phones muted, please? And who is that? Councilmember Tomachoff?
No, Clark.
No. Councilmember Clark, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Collins, on this particular issue, I have heard from the president of the Country Meadows HOA, a gentleman by the name of Flint Yale. And they have some technical concerns. And so I wanted to publicly assure them of two things. Number one, this is simply the blank petition hearing, and it is not currently the zoning request. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clark, that's correct.
Good. All right. Secondly, the people that Mr. Flint, Mr. Yale represents do have some technical issues. Can we assure them that we will attempt to work with them and the developer to create some common ground on those technical issues?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I will reach out to the HOA president to determine what the issues are and talk with the developer and see if there's something that we can do to ameliorate the issues.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
That concludes my questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Public hearing is now open on item number 10. Ms. Bauer?
No comments.
No comments. Excellent. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed, and there's no action required on this one either or even the next one. So Ms. Bauer, if you will introduce item number 11, please.
Northern Places Annexation AN-210, public hearing.
Again, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report is Lisa Collins, our interim Development Services Director.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So Northern Crossing Annexation is AN-210. Again, this is a blank petition hearing, requiring no action by the council. So the requirement is to provide a public hearing on the blank petition for the 3.5-acre parcel at Northern Avenue, east of the Loop 101. And again, this is required by the state statute as a step in the annexation process. On February 25th, the council had a workshop, did hear this, and gave the staff direction to proceed. Location, again, is shown on the vicinity map, to the west of City Hall, noted as Northern Crossing. The area is hard to see on this map. It's on northern, just east of the 101 and north of the casino property. Can see it a little bit better there. The existing zoning in the counting is RU43. The land use is designated as CCC in the city's zoning classification. So north of this property is the city of Peoria. The Maricopa County is west. South and east is the Tahoma-odym Nation, the casino property. The land use assumptions for Northern Crossing Annexation are convenience store, fast food, and multifamily. This is a conceptual site plan that in this case is showing a fast food on the northern portion of the site and hotel to the south. Envision Glendale 2040, our general plan does designate this as CCC Corporate Commerce Center. The Maricopa County zoning is RU43, approximately one-acre zoning. When this annexes into the city, it would annex in as RR45, which is essentially one-acre zoning. The development proposal, again, is a rezoning for a PAD. And as required by the state, the blank petition was filed with the county recorder. And at this hearing this evening, we're having a public hearing on the blank petition. Once that is completed, the property owner will be able to get the signatures that are required on the petition. Then we can schedule this for a hearing for adoption 30 days later. If the adoption is approved by the council, it would enter the city of Glendale city limits 30 days after that. There are some fiscal impacts that have been denoted with this. They would generate a positive net fiscal impact. It's residential now. Commercial would obviously provide some impact positively. The developer will pay all development impact fees, plan review fees, and permit fees. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item number 11. Ms. Bauer, any comments?
No, sir.
Okay. No comments from our public. So with that, public hearing is now closed. Again, no actions required on this one either. Would like to note that while the city of Glendale council continues to do its best to adhere to CDC guidelines for social distancing, Agenda items 12 through 14 require a timely approval in order for the city to meet its federal mandated deadlines. So that's very critical that we get these taken care of. We'll now move on to public hearings on resolutions and ordinances. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item 12, please?
Resolution number R20-37, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving an amendment of Glendale Community Housing's 2019 to 2023 Capital Fund Program, five-year action plan, and acceptance of a lead paint abatement grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report is interim director of Community Services, Jean Moreno.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Good evening.
Before you go, we're getting a lot of backfeed here. So three of the members at home, if you could mute your iPads, that would help us out a lot. We're getting a lot of backfeed here. All right. Go ahead and try that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. If it pleases the council in consideration of your time, I do have some background information that I'd like to provide on the next three public hearing items that's germane to all three items before speaking individually about each of those items, if that's okay. Great. So for the background on these next three items, the city of Glendale owns and operates three affordable housing developments and manages over 1,000 Housing Choice program vouchers that provide low-income families in our community with affordable and safe housing options. The programs are funded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. HUD regulations require the submission of multiple plans that govern our policies, programs, operations, and strategies for meeting the local housing needs and goals using that funding. At a minimum, we must make an annual submission that includes our annual plan and our capital fund program. Then every five years, or anytime there's a substantial change to our plans, we must also submit a five-year plan and a five-year capital fund program plan. HUD mandates that the city submit these adopted plans no later than 75 days before the end or the beginning of our next fiscal year, which in this case is April 17th, so this coming Friday. HUD also requires that each of these plans goes through a very extensive public participation process, which includes a 45-day comment period, resident advisory board meeting, a public hearing, which we'll have tonight, and then ultimately adoption of these plans via a resolution of the city council. Failure to submit adopted plans in a timely manner can result in HUD giving us a designation of a troubled public housing agency, which may also include additional reviews by HUD or the submission of additional documentation or performance plans. In light of the limitation on public gatherings, the Glendale Housing Administration had been in regular contact with HUD to determine if they intended to issue an extension for these deadlines, and even specifically asked if we could postpone this meeting tonight. But unfortunately, they were unable to give us direction in a timely manner. So the required 45-day public comment period began February 28th for all of these items and included a variety of ways for the public to provide feedback on these plans while maintaining the social distancing requirements that have been implemented over the past month. Those options included a designated hotline in both English and Spanish, designated email address to submit comments, the ability to schedule a personal telephone appointment to speak with someone about the plans, and two resident advisory board meetings that were held via teleconference. All program participants in our public housing developments, as well as the Housing Choice voucher recipients, were also mailed a detailed mailer outlining these options to participate and given information about the public hearings to be held tonight. They also were provided with a detailed summary of the plan changes. The materials were also posted at our housing facilities and on the city's website in multiple places. While we did field several questions about the proposed changes, there were no comments or recommendations made from that process. So unless the council has any specific questions regarding the requirements of these particular items or the public process, I can proceed to the brief presentation on each of these items individually. Item 12 includes two decisions of the city council. The first is acceptance of the lead abatement grant from HUD in the amount of $35,100 to inspect and certify 54 units at the Lamar Homes and Glendale Homes developments. Additionally, the acceptance of this grant triggers the need to amend the city's five-year capital fund program for the years 2019 to 2023. Staff is requesting that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving these two items. That concludes my presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions on this item.
All right. We have any questions on item number 12 from the council?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm okay with this item on the capital fund program. I am very concerned with, and not tonight, but I'd like for our city manager to ask staff to get us all a report. I assume that this is going to allow us to accept a lead paint abatement. And so I would assume that there's lead paint in these three, these public housing. And so I'd like to have a report of how much lead and the plant to abate that, if city manager can provide that later.
Okay. You're getting a nod of the head yes down here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Public hearing is now open on item number 12, resolution R20-37. Ms. Bauer, any comments?
No, sir.
No comments from the public. Public hearing is now closed on item number 12. Can we get a motion on resolution R20-37, please?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Eldama.
Thank you. I motion to approve resolution number R20-37.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Is that correct?
Clark.
Clark. Okay. Okay. To approve recommended action, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 13, please?
Resolution number R20-38, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing submission of the city of Glendale Community Housing's 2020 Annual PHA Plan Form HUD-50075-ST and Five-Year PHA Plan Form HUD-50075-5Y to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This item also includes two decisions of the city council, which are, again, approving and authorizing the submission of both the 2020 Annual Plan and the Five-Year Plan. As mentioned previously, these plans govern our policies and general program requirements on eligibility, as well as basic operations. All of the proposed changes to these plans are designed to benefit our residents by making it easier to access services and information about our programs. The most significant change improves the process that we will use to open up our waiting list by allowing interested parties to submit applications by phone, online, mail, fax, and in person. The process would be open for 21 days, which is a significant improvement over the current process. The application material will also be made available in a variety of languages. Applicants will be selected from a computerized random drawing to be placed on the waitlist, which is very different than how we do that now. The other changes include improving communication about how to request accommodations if an applicant needs help with the process, and cleaning up some specific language to reflect HUD's current guidelines. Staff is requesting that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of these plans to HUD. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item 13, resolution R20-38. Ms. Bauer, any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on resolution R20-38, please? Anybody?
Mayor?
Mayor?
Mr. Turner?
Thank you. I move we adopt...
I move we adopt the Resolution R 20-38.
Second.
Okay, a motion, Councilmember Turner, second, from Councilmember Aldama, to approve recommended action, any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item number 14, Resolution R 20-39, please?
Resolution number R 20-39, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving an amendment of Glendale Community Housing's 2020 to 2024 Capital Fund Program, five-year action plan, and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item 14 is one of those items that we look at the previous item that you just adopted. Item 12 amended our capital fund program for years 2019 to 2023 in order to identify the fiscal year in which the grant funding was allocated by HUD. After that, however, now we have to go and amend our 2020 to 2024 capital plan to show that that funding would actually be spent within that plan period. So this action is requiring amendment to reflect the current five-year plan. So staff is requesting that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of the capital fund plan for 2020 to 2024 to HUD. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Questions from our council? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item number 14, Resolution R 20-39. Ms. Bauer, do you have any comments from the public on this?
No, sir.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on a Resolution R 20-39?
Mayor?
Mayor? Ms. Clark?
Yes, thank you. I move we pass and adopt Resolution number R 20-39.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Clark, second, from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve recommended action, any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, conduct a roll call vote, Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimous. Moving on to new business, Ms. Bauer, could you introduce item 15? If you would, read the resolution in full into the record.
Resolution number R 20-40, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any additional transaction documents with Umom Housing 6, Inc., or the Arizona Department of Housing in support of the Bethany Home Crossing multi-family low-income rental development. Whereas on May 14, 2019, city council adopted Resolution number R 19-51, authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2019-20 HUD Annual Action Plan, which included a home funding allocation of $390,437.17 to Helping Hands Housing Services, a subsidiary of Umom Housing 6, Inc., for the construction of the Bethany Crossing Development Project End. Whereas on February 25, 2020, city council adopted Resolution R 20-23, authorizing and directing the entering into a development agreement with Umom Housing 6, Inc., and related subordination agreement and declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the Bethany Crossing Project in accordance with the previously approved funding allocation. And whereas the state of Arizona Department of Housing is also providing financial support for the project with funding from low-income housing tax credits and state housing fund programs, and requires that the city of Glendale execute additional transaction documents to allow the project to proceed in a timely manner. And whereas Umom is desirous to begin development of the Bethany Crossing Project, ADOH is desirous to provide program funding in support of the project, and the city is desirous to execute all transactions necessary to effectuate the terms of the funding allocations and associated agreements, be resolved by the council of the city of Glendale as follows. Section 1, that the city manager or designee is required to obtain legal review and approval from the city attorney or designee for all documents required to effectuate the city's funding commitment to be on file in the office of the city clerk of the city of Glendale. Section 2, that the city manager or designee and the city clerk be authorized and directed to execute and deliver all other documents required to effectuate the city's funding commitment on behalf of the city of Glendale.
Yeah, I missed that first part. No, just kidding. Okay. Any questions, or Ms. Moreno?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I clearly don't need to make a staff presentation, but just to provide a little bit of information. So the developer is attempting to finalize the transaction before the end of the month, and the state's requiring the execution of additional legal documents that will support the state's funding allocation for this project. So the state is also producing funding through their low-income housing tax credit program, as well as their state housing fund programs. So in order to ensure that the developer can finalize this transaction in a timely manner, we've brought this item forward to the city council. The state is still in the process of finalizing the documents that they need us to sign, but we wanted to make sure that we were being supportive of this development continuing to move forward. So we are requesting that council adopt this resolution that would allow us to execute any remaining legal documents in support of this project that council has already previously adopted.
All right, very good. Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Bauer, any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion for R 20-40, please? Item number 15.
Yes, mayor, I move we adopt Resolution number R 20-40.
Second by Councilmember Clark.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Tomachoff, a second, from Councilmember Clark, to approve recommended action, any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 16 and read it in its entirety into the record?
Resolution number R 20-41, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, temporarily suspending rent payments owed to the city due to the financial impacts of COVID-19. Whereas on January 30, 2020, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services declared a public health emergency to aid the nation's healthcare community in responding to COVID-19. And whereas on March 15, 2020, Governor Doug Ducey ordered all public schools closed statewide through the end of the school year to ensure the safety of all Arizona residents. And whereas on March 30, 2020, Governor Ducey issued a shelter-in-place order prohibiting nonessential businesses from remaining open to the public. And whereas the economic impacts of COVID-19 have been significant and could threaten to undermine the economic security and the stability of businesses within the city of Glendale. And whereas many Glendale businesses are experiencing substantial losses of income as a result of business closures, the loss of hours or wages or layoffs related to COVID-19 hindering their ability to keep up with their rents, utility bills, and other business operating expenses. And whereas the city has detrimental, or has determined that additional measures are necessary to protect public health or to mitigate the economic impacts of COVID-19, be it resolved by the council of the city of Glendale as follows. Section 1, that the city hereby temporarily defers all rent, including any other associated fees or charges owed to the city on commercial leases and other contracts it has entered into with Atrium Holdings LLC due to impacts of the COVID-19 virus. This deferral of payment shall only apply when (a) the basis for nonpayment arising out of a substantial decrease in business income due to the impact of COVID-19; (b) the decrease in business income described in subparagraph (a) is caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, including (i) substantial decrease in business income caused by reduction in opening hours or consumer demand, or (ii) compliance with a recommendation or order from a governmental health authority to stay home, self-quarantine, or avoid congregating with others during the COVID-19 pandemic. Section 2, that an emergency of the public health and welfare exists requiring this temporary deferral of rent payments to become immediately effective. Section 3, that the city manager in consultation with the city attorney shall determine the terms upon which Atrium Holdings LLC shall make payment to the city for all of the deferred rents or other payments. Waiver or dismissal of rent shall be a question of the city council.
Mayor, members of the council, this item, again, is, as read into record, allows the city manager in consultation with the city attorney to establish terms for a temporary deferral of payments owed to the city of Glendale for the management of the city-owned Renaissance Convention Center, the parking structure, and the media center. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Phelps, would part of the prescriptive, I don't know exactly how you're going to negotiate this, you and Mr. Bailey, but to put something in the agreement that should the Atrium Holdings Hospitality be part of, or a recipient of any kind of stimulus or bailout from the federal government that the rent would become due immediately to the city of Glendale?
Mayor, members of the council, again, we'll enter into negotiations and discussions with them. It would probably be inappropriate to determine exactly what those discussions and negotiations would be at this point, but I know that issue has been raised, and we'll take it as duly noted.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Ms. Bauer, any comments from the public on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on Resolution R 20-41, item number 16, please?
Yeah, mayor?
Mr.?
Councilmember Aldama.
Mr. Aldama, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I motion to approve item number 16, Resolution number R 20-41.
Second from Councilmember Clark.
I have a motion, Councilmember Aldama, I have a second, a second before yours, from Vice Mayor, to approve the recommended action, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
While I don't disagree with what we're doing, I feel it's premature because we have not been presented with any information about our city budget at this point. So I would prefer to wait until we've had our May 7 and May 9 budget presentation so we're aware of where we are as a city fiscally going forward with next year. So for that reason, I vote nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Explain my vote, mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I concur with the request and the comments made by Councilmember Tomachoff, and I think that a 60-day extension would have been appropriate and given all of us a chance to see better how this situation is going to play out. And with that, I vote nay.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Bauer, can you introduce item number 17? If you would, please read that in its entirety into the record.
Ordinance number O 20-26, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of Amendment Number 1 to the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase and transfer of property with the city of Glendale and Town Development, Inc., and ordering that a certified copy of the ordinance be recorded. Whereas on December 10, 2019, the city of Glendale entered into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase and sale of property commonly known as Glen Lakes Golf Course in the city of Glendale. And whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States of America, Donald J. Trump, found and proclaimed that the COVID-19 outbreak in the United States constituted a national emergency, be it ordained by the council of the city of Glendale as follows. Section 1, that it is deemed in the best interest of the city of Glendale and the citizens that Amendment Number 1 to the purchase and sell agreement for the purchase and transfer of property be entered into between the city of Glendale and Town Development, Inc., and Arizona Corporation, which agreement is now in file in the office of the city clerk of the city of Glendale. Section 2, that the city manager and city clerk are authorized and directed to execute and deliver such agreement on behalf of the city of Glendale.
Mayor, members of the council, again, this is just an extension of an already approved purchase and sell agreement for the property known as Glen Lakes Golf Course, and this will allow them to extend closing. We anticipate that the closing could occur no later than November 30 of this year. I'll be glad to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions from our council?
Yes, mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Phelps, and thank you for doing this. I'm glad you were able to, and thank you to town, homes by town, for being willing to work with the city on this. I do have a question, though, about the ongoing maintenance. Right now, we're using golf maintenance solutions, but there's, I think it's been probably just right around a year, there's been no golf happening, and I don't know what our contractual obligation is moving forward with golf maintenance solutions, and they've done a good job. But looking at, you know, to the end of the year, waiting for closing on this, if we were able to save some money on this by just getting a regular, because it's just general landscaping happening there, like Glen Lakes Golf Course, and we're spending just about almost double what we spend per acre on a city park. If we could at least take a look at getting a regular landscape contract out there to save, you know, $60,000, $70,000, I think it'd definitely be worth looking into.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Bauer, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion for ordinance 020-26, item number 17?
Yes, mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 020-26.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilmember Hugh, a second, from the Vice Mayor, to approve recommended action, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Explain my vote, mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, I agree with Councilmember Tomachoff that if we can save money on the upkeep of this course, that will be fine, but I also want to make sure we all realize that we have told the residents in that area that we would keep the course green and mowed until such time as it changed hands, so long as it was in our hands. So as long as we don't renege on that. And then I would also like to say that I am glad that we are returning to the general plan amendment process that is actually what the voters approved when they approved the general plan a few years ago, and I think it's the way we should have done it all along. And with that, I vote aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries unanimous. Request for future workshop and executive session. Can I get a motion for a future workshop?
Yes, mayor. I move that we hold the next regularly scheduled city council workshop on Tuesday, April 28, 2020, at 12:30 p.m. in the city council chambers, to be followed by an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03.
Second.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second, from Councilmember Hugh, all in favor, well, any discussion on a motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please vote aye?
Aye.
Actually, you know, we can't do it that way, we've got to do a roll call. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Passes unanimous. Comments from our council? We open that up for comments and suggestions, starting with Councilmember Aldama. Do you have any?
Thank you, mayor, I do, I'll keep them short. I just wanted to thank our citizens and for your patience. I know this isn't the best way to conduct a meeting, and I know that sooner than later we will get back to our normal in-person meetings, and you'll have that opportunity to be in person and share your comments and concerns with us. That'll be it, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Yes, mayor, very short also. Easter has just passed, so I want to wish everyone a belated Happy Easter. I share the comments of Councilmember Aldama. I think everyone will be glad when the COVID-19 is over and we can get back to regular business. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
None tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Mayor, just quickly, thank you. Stay home, stay safe, it's working. The curve is flattening. I know it's difficult for all of us, going out to the grocery store has become quite an adventure, I think, these days, but I think we've got maybe, you know, several, a few more weeks of this, but it is working.
So stay home, stay safe, and someday we'll look back on this and think, wow, I actually survived spending all that time with my family. So that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as someone who lives alone, social distancing is kind of a way of life for me, so I guess I'm not going to earn the T-shirt that the rest of you have. I would like to get in front of my camera here, I would like to say that I am proud of our residents and the way that they have undertaken this and the patience that they're showing. It's really good, and it's nice to note that our police calls and our fire calls are down during this period of time, so apparently we are being good and kind to each other. I would like to note, in keeping with the kindness, that there will be a drive-through food bank event this Thursday at Glendale Community College. And you will be able to, if you are, if you are in need of food, and you will be able to remain in your car in a drive-through fashion at Glendale Community College and pick up a food box, this is this Thursday between 11:30 in the morning and 2:30 in the afternoon. The line will start and queue up over on 63rd Avenue, and you'll enter the north parking lot, proceed all the way through, get your food box, and then exit out onto 59th Avenue. So if you, or anyone you know, is in need of food Thursday from 11:30 to 2:30 at Glendale Community College, a drive-through food bank event. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd just like to say amen to what has been said by the other councilmen's.
All right, and I think everybody knows me well enough to know that I try to find humor in everything, even some of the saddest things, you can always find some humor in. Got a joke the other day that was sent to me, and it basically said, and I'll probably get in trouble for this, but that's okay, I've used so much sanitizer and washed my hands so often that when I have to pee, my toilet actually clings itself. So you gotta find humor in this stuff. With that, we are going to open this up. Next on our agenda is citizens' comments. Council makes the opportunity for citizens to bring information and business for the council that's not included on the printed agenda, and the council can only act on matters that are on the printed agenda, but may refer the matter to the city manager for follow-up. And this being a really kind of odd meeting, that would have to be either on computer or on telephone, do we have anybody wishing to make comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have an audio recording from James Dibler, a Phoenix resident.
All right, is that the only one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead and play that if you would.
Hello, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, in the Phoenix Council District 5. I know the country is going through a hard time due to the coronavirus. The city of Glendale and the state of Arizona are trying to reduce the spread of COVID-19. Currently, there are 3,102 cases of COVID-19 in Arizona and 122 death cases from the disease. The small businesses in Glendale needs consumers to keep their business afloat through checkout or delivery only without checkout or delivery today. The small businesses will suffer during the pandemic. Glendale Community College and Arizona State University switched to online classes and began using Zoom as the platform for the students to learn on an everyday basis. The churches run the Valley of the Sun, switched from in-person to online services to avoid getting people sick from the virus. Schools were canceled due to the coronavirus. Finally, two weeks ago, vendor church was having a food drive for individuals who got laid off from their job and needed food assistance from the church. Glendale Mayor Jerry Waters helped out with the food drive with two staff and volunteers to keep that going. There were hundreds of cars lined up outside of the church to give food and supplies during the coronavirus pandemic. I think that you as a company will become stronger than ever before. We will get through this together. America will grow stronger and better. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, and that was James Dibler, he's one of our favorites down here. James, you don't sound like your voice is very well, I hope that you're taking care of yourself. With that, if there's no other comments before our council, I'd like to thank everyone for watching, attending, and if there's no objection from this council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.